Mayor.
Thank you. The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty. It is six P. M. This meeting will be held in accordance with the Governor's new executive order and twenty-nine twenty issued on the March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, regarding the open meeting requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-zero, at the sec, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act, in an effort to help avoid the spread of the COVID-nineteen, to maximize transparency and provide public access to the city council meetings. Everyone, please place your hand over your heart. Councilmember Fossey, would you lead us into pledge?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member District Two, Sidney Fossey.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Three, Cal Campbell.
Here.
Council Authority Member District Four, Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Luis Uribe.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
There will be no changes to the agenda. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda items to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. There are no conflicts. We'll go off to section item two, public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council L. R. A. Board. Individual comments will be limited to the maximum of three minutes. Under state laws, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. If you would like to join us to make comments now or on any business item that we are about to consider, please refer to the last page of this agenda for the comment procedures. Annabelle, are there any public comments? No, you are muted.
All right. Maria, can you hear us?
Yes, me? Yes, yes. Oh, yes.
Okay, you have three minutes to speak. Go ahead. Make your come.
Well, I was just regarding about the river. They they actually do a lot of fires lately and we're not even.
Excuse us, Maria. We'll be taking that up on item number four. This is for any items not appearing on the agenda, just generally.
Okay, oh, well, there's a lot of homeless people that go to the river. They just throw their garbage everywhere and also people from other places. They don't, when I walk through there, there's a lot of bottles and cigarette butts in there, so it's not safe for kids to walk because sometimes they just go and they leave all their trash there.
Maria, we'll consider that when we talk about item four point one. Do you have any other additional comments?
Well, not at this moment that I can think of.
Okay, well, thank you for your input. Annabelle, do we have any other public comment?
There are no other public comments.
Okay, thank you very much. And Maria, thank you. We will be taking up that topic in the next item after the consent calendar. We'll move on to item three, which consists of item three A, wave readings, and item three B, approval of the August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board minutes. Is there anyone wishing to pull any item or comment? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar items as presented?
Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Fossey, I will second.
We have a motion to approve their consent calendar as stated by Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez and a second by Councilmember Sidney Fossey. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Members, Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell. Cal.
Yes.
Thank you. Fossey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Uribe?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item four point one, River Cove River Access Nuisance Workshop Discussion and/or Direction.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening to the council and good evening to our many attendees this evening who, I am going to guess, are mostly from River Cove. And thank you for participating. So I'm going to make this presentation relatively short because I imagine the community wants to give input on some of the ideas. But I'm going to give a little, I'm going to share my screen here and give a little bit of history and then propose the three concepts that we've discussed. Some of the River Cove neighborhood, not all, but some ideas that we have that might be slightly longer term solutions for for some of the nuisance problems that that they've been, the community has been experiencing down there for a number of years. So just give me one second here and I will. Okay. Okay, so you should all be able to see this when you folks at home. So real quickly, some history regarding this whole situation. We've done quite a bit of research on this and we have some staff that have worked here a very long time and, in fact, we've talked to some previous electeds that remember some of the concerns about overcrowding and nuisance type behavior down at River Cove dating back in some cases to over twenty years ago. So this is not a new problem. It's something that has been playing in the area for a long time. We've had ebbs and flows of it, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. There have been some seasons that have been much worse than others. I will say that in my tenure here, dealing with some community concerns, this last summer has been one of the worst. And I think a lot of the folks that live down there would probably agree with that. And there's a variety of reasons for that. The news issues that are most prevalent down there, as you heard from the lady that spoke during public comment, are trash, illegal activity, vandalism, parking congestion, and just general overcrowding of the area. On a very, very busy holiday weekend or hot summer weekend, you, it's not uncommon to see parking along River Cove Drive completely impacted the whole way down, depending on the level of the river mostly. Because when the river levels are very low, the sandy banks are exposed and and create areas that are attractive to people that want to go hang out at the river or raft or, you know, enjoy that 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 area. So as you could tell, it's been something that's happened for quite some time, and it's not actually all that uncommon for some of our other local communities. Oakdale has some similar issues and I spoke with the City of Ripon, and they they also experienced some similar issues depending on the seasonal timeline. So this year, in response to some community members that reached out to us, we tried to take a much more proactive approach from the beginning of the summer. The mayor and councilmember Campbell, Patrick, and our chief and I all went to a sort of outdoor community meeting more towards the beginning of the summer, where we listened to a lot of the concerns that had occurred just that season and in prior years. And so one of the things that we committed to do, and we did do, was we increased private security. We have a private security firm we contract with for all of our parks areas. We increased sheriff's patrol overtime quite a bit throughout the summer. We installed surveillance cameras along, I think, Presswood and River Cove Drive to make sure we were monitoring what was going on. And although I know that it didn't seem like this, we actually increased quite a bit of staff time for trash cleanup and pickup. And even then, we still dealt with many issues in that area related to trash. So, well, before I get to this, one of the things I just want to mention is that we, there's, depending on the the who you speak to down in River Cove, and I've talked to dozens of people down there at this point, there are a variety of theories about why the problem exists. Staff's opinion on with regard to researching this, looking at what happens in other communities, and then just looking back over our records over a long period of time here. The problem, as I mentioned, seems to be worse in summers that are very hot and summers where the river level is exceptionally low. There's has been some thought over the years that the recent, more recent parking fees in Jacob Myers Park have contributed to some overcrowding across the river because perhaps people just don't want to pay the parking fee and you can go park across the way for free. And while that is possible, there's some impact, we would simply point out that this was a problem long before we ever had a parking fee over at Jacob Myers. Our general thought about it is that in Jacob Myers Park, we, you know, have a park attendants that work there and we do what we can to try to limit, well, prohibit alcohol use. And so some of the folks that may want to have that more of that experience related to, you know, use of alcohol or more of a party atmosphere will seek other areas of the river where that's not directly monitored all the time. So we think that's a big part of it as well. And then I'll also say that many of the River Cove residents have said to me that this is by no means them saying that every single resident, excuse me, visitor that comes down to the access the river there is is a problem. It's a small percentage of folks that refuse to follow the no alcohol policy or that, you know, leave trash or, as as one public comment we already received, indicated start, have barbecues, there are small fires. And so we have become increasingly concerned about that, especially from a safety perspective in a dry summer when you have a lot of dry foliage down there. In addition, if you go check the area, you'll notice that the natural riparian habitat in that area has become steadily more beaten down over the years. And it doesn't, in years where you have subsequent hot summers, you don't really get the opportunity for that that vegetation to grow back to sort of what it was naturally supposed to be. You also see areas where people have cut in paths that didn't exist prior, you know, to create an area for them, them and their families to hang out on a hot day, which is not not optimal either. We also do, from time to time, have homeless issues along the river, as most areas along the river do, though it seems to me that the majority of the issues we receive during the summer from people visiting and using that that river access. And I I'm going to leave it to the neighbors to share with you the different nuisances, but needless to say, they've experienced just about everything you can imagine. Folks drinking too much and driving out of their neighborhood, folks using their their hoes in the front yard to wash down their their, you know, float devices, leaving trash in people's front yards, you know, you name it. So this summer, we actually did quite a bit of enforcement. There were a number of, I think, more than a couple arrests out there. There were many, many citations issued for mostly alcohol violations, and and we had to kick out quite a few people. We didn't see that really change the behavior, though. It's just continue with new people, week in and week out. So when we got to the end of the season, or towards the end of the season, we started having some more discussion about, look, okay, these other, these things that we've tried this summer clearly have not had the effect we had hoped. And we certainly don't want to use community budgets and resources for things that don't work. We want a solution that works for the River Cove neighborhood and will allow us the ability to to, you know, hopefully manage this problem as best we can so they can enjoy their community and 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 move forward. So here are three longer term solutions for consideration in the council, and this is by no means an exhaustive list. These are just the ones that we have generally discussed. If you go to my staff report that's in the agenda that's printed, there's more detail. But I didn't want to cloud up the PowerPoint with that, but I'll just walk through these real quickly. The first that we've discussed is the physical barrier, such as a fence with a lockable gate, with gates probably, which would allow regulated access and provide more control for to address overcrowding. We we'd want it to look nice, but this is a very long stretch of of area along River Cove. I think it's every bit of three quarters of a mile. And so some of the estimates we've received, it would cost roughly eighty thousand dollars to fence that with a nice powder coated fence and inappropriate gates. And from staff's perspective, we're not sure that that really solves the problem. We think that, you know, it's very possible people simply climb the fence if they're that motivated to get in. And we're not sure that, you know, heard from some people in the community that they're not sure that it would look all that nice, which is fair enough. So that's one concept. Another concept is seasonal parking restrictions. So one thing that's been talked about a number of times in the past is the possibility of red curbing on a seasonal basis or creating some sort of yellow curb that's seasonal, that would restrict parking along the north side of River Cove Drive, which is the side closest to the riverbank. It seems like a really simple solution, but what I can tell you from researching this in other communities that have tried that is that it has not worked. Folks will park further away and simply walk to the river. In fact, if you go to coastal communities near beaches, some people will walk half a mile, mile more if they want to get to the beach badly enough. So we're not sure that that's a reasonable solution, and we're not sure that actually is going to create less of a nuisance for River Cove because we're worried that folks would end up, the park visitors end up parking in the neighborhoods, which would reduce parking for the the residents there, which is not good either. Finally, temporary, number three is the one that staff, from staff perspective, we think has the best chance of success, which is doing a temporary river access closure along along River Cove Drive, which would allow habitat regrowth and repair of the natural environment. So basically, what we do is we post closure signs all the way down River Cove Drive where there are access points, notifying whoever wanted to visit that the area is closed. And we would propose that it be done for the summer season of April twenty-one through October of twenty-one, which would give time for the habitat to regrow. It also would allow us to post on that sign that, listen, if you'd like river access in Riverbank, we have it. It's called Jacob Myers Park, and it's right across the street, or river, rather. And we would work with private security and and the sheriffs to enforce that. It'd be a much easier enforcement in one sense because rather than, you know, having to try to catch people breaking some of the park rules, folks just simply wouldn't be allowing that area during those summer months and therefore would, you know, be asked to leave, you know, essentially be trespassing. So we, you know, friendly request they leave. And we know, we know generally the seasons and weekends where this is the worst. And so we would increase presence in those times to make sure that we're, you know, maintaining that closure. I've been asked by a number of River Cove residents, well, you know, were we going to have people out there watching at all times for this closure? Practically, the answer is no. You know, obviously, we don't have resources to have somebody there twenty-four seven. But I would say that during times when we are either receiving complaints or doing, you know, normal patrols or certainly those heightened times when we know people are going to be there, we will have, you know, enforcement help there. So the that's, that concept would alleviate some of the concerns certainly for next year. And so any reasonable person would say, well, wait, Sean, what about the year after that and the year after that? The Army Corps of Engineers, who own the the right of way along the river and and dictate a lot of the the regulations, have indicated to us that in the future, if the city determines that there is an overcrowding problem that's destroying the environment or there's the risk of fire or something like that, we can, on a regular basis, choose to close them. So for example, it may end up being that when we get into twenty-two, some of this problem has subsided because people know they can't use this area. But if we run into problems again, say during a very busy holiday weekend, we could very easily have make the determination that we should close the access for that weekend because we know that it's very likely to get out of control. So that's our proposal as the best option. And again, not an exhaustive list. There could be other creative ideas. And so this is really just an opportunity for the council to toss these ideas around, give us some direction about what you want to do, and we'll formalize it to you at a future meeting. But it was also mostly to give the residents of River Cove a little opportunity to give you some feedback about what they think might be a workable solution. And we did notice all of the property owners within within River Cove. And so I'd be happy to take any questions or comments or or further direction from council, and I'm here to answer any questions from the community as well.
Before I open it up for the public, thank you, Sean. Are there any council comments or questions before the the public comments?
I have a question and some comments.
Go ahead.
As our city manager just spoke, this has been a problem for many, many years. And I've been involved in it the whole time that I've been a city council member. I like item three, but I see some problems with it with the enforcement. And I'd like to make some possible suggestions for the enforcement because we lack manpower. But if we don't enforce and the people think, see that it's not being enforced, they'll just think it's a joke and it's a waste of everyone's time. So I would suggest that we consider possibly putting, if we decide to do this, the digital trailer sign right at the turnoff through River Cove all week long and sort of like just saying, the bank is closed, and let the people know. And that would be something communicating with them. I also like to see more social media with it. And then I would like to even think about, because they have a lot of thefts down there, a few more video cameras in the area to help patrol it. And even possibly getting the sheriff's drones because they're very busy and they can't run down there for everything. But we need to tell the people of River Cove, hey, if you see a problem, let us know. We can fly the drone down there if somebody's got it and check it out and see if it's worth the officer's time because they're tied up in other ways. But I I really think that unless we can find reasonable way, reasonable ways to enforce it, then it won't work. So those are just some of the suggestions that I would like to see. Also, with the homeless, I know that can be a year round problem. And they hide very well down there, but we need to enforce it with them also and find them other places to be so that they aren't making the park area, or I mean, that bank area, look worse. Thank you.
Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez, I'd also like option number three. And I think that we should also, if we go with this option, put that the closure, we should put it on our website so that people are aware when they take a look at our website. We have our beautiful electric signs, two of them, that we can put that information on there, too. And then I had a question on the curb, if we put the red paint down which says you can't park here, it would be permanent, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if if we were going to do a regulated parking, what we probably would do is not red curb it. We would post parking signs that are kind of seasonal and so people are aware, we probably would use barricades of some kind, but people are aware that, you know, during X number of months, you can't park on this side of the street, you know, by order of the city council.
Okay, I I just, you know, I just feel for the people of River Cove because those residents, they, you know, have the right to enjoy their park. It's close to their home and 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 the river, you know, access and all. And I know that for a lot, that was the reason why that they chose that that side of town and, you know, bought their homes there. So I just, you know, I feel bad for them, but I hope that we can come up with a solution that will be benefiting to everyone. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Revere, I'll make a comment about the homelessness issue. When I went out for the pit count, we actually saw the the side of the embankment there kind of, it was dug out, it was caved in, a lot of manmade trails throughout the entire area there. So that is, it is a real issue. For the physical barrier, I I don't see how that's going to be a permanent solution with the lockable gates. I I do think if they're going over there to party, that they're going there to drink, they're going to find ways to to do that. The red curbing, I I also think I've seen it in other cities. They're going to park wherever, they're going to the residential area. They'll they'll take up other parking in other areas just to get down there. They'll make the way down there. So the only one I'm leaning towards right now, and I do like Cal's idea there for for option three, so that's where I'm leaning right now.
Cindy, do you have any comments?
Good with option three?
Before I bring it to the to the public, none of these are going to work, no matter what we do. The river is open to access from across Jacob Myers Park, floating down the river. People, as you say, Sean, they're in the times when the river is low, the beaches are there, they float down, they go there. Nothing's going to stop them from coming out of the river. We're trying to prevent them from going to the river. As much as the Army Corps is allowing us to do riparian repair, which I think is a smart idea no matter what, and have minimal access, trying to control it from all access points, unless you're willing to put in a lot of resources on the river as well as on on the shore, what we do will be just an effort to try to control a problem that's been there ever since the river has been there. And I I do feel for the individuals, the homeowners in that area. But again, the the river, as well as any other waterway, is accessible to all and is not restricted. So if we restrict it because of riparian repair, that would be as much as possible. But that won't stop anybody who floated down the river, and someone's going to pick them up as they tramp through, coming on out. Unless you put up a barrier on both ends, one on the riverside and one on the street side, and I don't see us doing that either. But I'd like to hear from the public. Is there any more comments before I open it to the public? Okay, are there any public comments?
Mayor, we do have a public comment from Chris Robinson. I'm going to allow.
Hey, Chris.
I'm trying to allow it's any promoting, just a moment. I don't know why.
We have all night. And as we're considering his comment, he made comments earlier, those are your main for this discussion.
Okay, okay, I see. Because he's using the older version of Zoom, he's going to have to join us differently. So here we go. See what happens. Hello, Chris, can you hear us? There you are. He's joining us. My video, you have to unmute.
I can hear you and see you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent.
Go ahead. You have three minutes to speak.
Okay, I'll try and keep it to that as quick quickly as I can. First of all, I want to thank everybody for taking this issue seriously. It is something near and dear to my heart and other residents in 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 River Cove. And I want to speak directly to the concerns of the mayor and and also Councilman Campbell. We know that it may not work. Personally, I think option three has the most promise, and it's also the lowest impact. We're not painting anything. We're not buying an eighty thousand dollar fence. But what I honestly believe, and from talking with some other neighbors, we think that just breaking the cycle for a season and and getting the message out that this is a neighborhood, it's not Burning Man, I think this riparian habitat restoration project has the most opportunity out of all the all the options to possibly break the chain of this this party mentality that people have. I love when I love when people come down here and enjoy the river. It's been here a lot longer than any of us. It's been here a lot longer than this neighborhood and everyone should have access to it. And nobody here in the neighborhood, down, down to the man, wants to deny anyone access to the river who's using it respectfully and, and understanding that it is a neighborhood. But at the same time, although the problem has been here a number of years, I can personally attest to the fact that 2019 and 2020 have been banner years for abuse of the river and the neighborhood. So it's just my belief that we need to try something. And, and I know the mayor thinks it's, it's not going to work, but I think, I think it can if we work on enforcement. And speaking to Councilman Campbell's concern about enforcement, I actually believe that the neighbors down here will band together and help with enforcement. You know, if we start seeing a bunch of people unloading kegs of beer, that's when we call it in. You've got eyes on the ground. We're all looking out for this neighborhood. We want things to go in the right direction. We're going to help you with that. I like the idea of social media flyers, the, the, the signs, the, the mobile sign. I love all of that. So that's all I'm here to say is I believe that 2021 is our opportunity to break the cycle of people mistaking a neighborhood for an amusement park. And if we can kind of cause people to pause and reflect on what this river is actually for, maybe we can get proper behavior going in the future and we won't have to have such draconian restrictions. But until people understand that this isn't the Black Rock Desert and we can't be unloading Bluetooth speakers and, and 30 racks of, of natural ice every weekend, something, something's got to happen. And I honestly believe that option three is our best bet at breaking that cycle.
Thank you. Are there any further comments before I bring it back to the council?
Thank you, Chris. There is, we have Elaine Alkus. I'm going to allow Elaine to talk now.
Elaine, go ahead.
Hi there. Thank you for hearing me. I wanted to, I also support option three. We live in the neighborhood, but on Briar Cliff, a little farther away. But I, I really feel for my neighbors on that street. But I would like to also add that I didn't see on there an option for parking permits. I, I don't think parking permits is the way to go right now, but maybe after the closure, after it opens up again, a system of parking permits that would, you know, allow as many as needed for, for any of the residents as well as those for our guests. I think that, that might be an option for 2022. And that's all.
Elaine, Annabelle?
There are no more people wishing to speak.
All right, thank you. Bring it back to the council for any further consideration. I'm not saying that we should not try to resolve the issue. And I do believe that the, the fourth option is when that should be attempted. But there are a lot of people who, again, have no consideration for signs as well as anyone else's feelings. You can see it in the way people drive as well as the way people just treat others. I would like to see it resolved where people have respect for the river as well as the neighborhood. The, the repair and repair may not be completed during this time. There was extensive damage. Maria first started talking. Chris, I know you've been down there and you can see that there is a lot of damage and may not be done during this period of time. It may take much longer than that. And if we do go that route, it affects everyone, even the, in the neighborhood. So if we go to option four, which I'm sure we will, we need to set some metrics and goals. What do we consider a reasonable repair along the river access? And who's going to make that determination? Because I'm not qualified to do it. And I see a lot of trampled down vegetation. Does that mean it's destroyed? But we have to have an arborist, we have to have some from the Army Corps or from the US Parks or the California Wildlife that can tell us what is a repairable item, what is not, what does it take to have it repaired and how long. But again, the access to the river is not just over the hill. It's across the river and floating down the river. So as we're moving forward to this, I believe everyone wants option four. Sean, can you come up with some type of plan with Mr. Robinson that can identify what we're trying to accomplish, setting goals and metrics? And any plan of action and expenditure? Is there anyone from the council wanting to add to that?
Yeah, and Mayor, just to confirm, I think you meant option three, right?
Yeah, option three, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Rebaire, that's, that's what I was going to clarify here. And I think, Mayor, I think you're right. I think it's going to take multiple cycles. I don't think one, I don't think 2021 is going to fix everything. I've, we, we've seen the manmade trails. It's, I don't think one cycle. So I think if, and I'm, I am ready to make a motion for number three, but I'm also ready to, I, I understand that this could be more than just one cycle. So I don't know if there's any other comments from council, but I'll make a motion for, to approve item 4.1, option three.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
My comment is I agree with the mayor that this won't work 100%. But if we are more successful and we do improve the repairing rights, the plants down there, then it's going to be some good. And I just recently took a walk with the Corps of Engineers personnel along with our recreation director, Sue Fitzpatrick. And we were talking about a lot of things. And if we wanted them to take a look at the banks, I'm, I'm sure we could get that somebody qualified to come every once in a while and check it out. They were very positive when I took the walk with them a few weeks ago to Jacob Myers Park further down the river. And one of the things we were discussing was the condition of the bank on the other side. And even though it won't be 100% effective, if it's effective to a degree and makes it somewhat better and does improve the vegetation and the safety of it, it, it shows River Cove are trying our best to support them and to try to make this a better thing. The mayor is absolutely right. They come down the river and if they stop on the bank, most of the time they're not going to do much, but you do have those that will. And it won't, it's not a perfect solution, but it's a place we could start.
Can I throw in a quick comment on the riparian habitat?
Sure. Usually I don't do that, Chris, but I will allow it this one time.
Okay, I, I understand, Mayor. I'll make this really quick. This is something I can probably go over with, with Sean offline. But if there is an opportunity for residents of River Cove to participate in some type of planting or, or revegetation project, obviously we'd want that approved by the Corps and the city, what type of plants we could use. But I know that's something I would be willing to head up, even put some money into and definitely volunteer some time for. So it's not just a matter of pausing, people walking across the vegetation. We could actually reintroduce or, or transplant some vegetation. And that's something that, that I know there's people here that would be very interested in helping out with, myself included.
Thank you. In that, Sean, when you were doing your plan, we'll take a look at what needs to be replanted and then come up with a plan. I'm for everyone participating. I'm not for using personal funding to take care of public problems. But that's something that as you give us options later on, maybe there will be an option four that I was talking about. So Annabelle, do we need to take a vote on this?
Yes, to confirm your option.
Okay.
It sounds like there was consensus.
Someone else talking.
Oh.
I think it was me, Mayor. Just so I'm real clear. But what I'll do is I'll put something back on a future agenda that we could put on consent or a quick admin item. But basically it'll confirm that it's item three and I'll include a plan, like you've mentioned, that has detailed metrics about what we'd hope to achieve during the closure, including repair of habitat, getting experts out there to take a look at it to give us advice about what we can do to improve it. I'll work with Chris and, and the neighborhood about, you know, whether there's some community projects we could team up on. And I'll package that all together so that it's real clear what we're going to do for this coming year.
All right, thank you. Annabelle, direct me. What do we do next?
We had a motion by Vice Mayor Rebaire. Vice Mayor, you might want to restate that, that are you motioning to elect options three to include a plan with it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make my motion again. So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve item 4.1, option three.
I'll second that emotion. Councilmember Campbell.
Okay, I believe both of you have a, a motion to approve in a second with modifications to set a, a plan for metrics, goals and community involvement. That was a, a motion by the vice mayor and seconded by Councilmember Campbell. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse. Vice Mayor Rebaire.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six under new business, 6.1. Provide direction to city staff regarding establishing contribution limits for candidates for city office. Tom, is that you?
Yeah, it's, I can, I can, I'm prepared to give a report unless you want to give it.
All right, I'm sweet. I'm down to my phone for, for both. So I'm available for any questions.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll just run through it quickly and then Tom can, can talk to the finer points. I'm going to, the, the candidates running for office of the city of Riverbank are not subject to contribution limits. In October of 2019, the governor approved AB 571, which establishes contribution limits for candidates for city office effective January 1st of 2021. Under that law, they, candidates for city office, and this is statewide, and I'll get to the nuance here in a moment, will be subject to a $4,700 contribution limit from a single source per election. And the FPPC will periodically adjust this limit to account for inflation as, as things get more expensive. These are the default limits established under that legislation. Law also allows the city, any city, to establish its own contribution limits that differ from, from the, the base ones of AB 571. So the, the analysis of this is essentially that it comes down to really two issues. The first issue is, the first option rather is if the city does nothing, we simply fall into the general provisions of AB 571. You have your $4,700 limit per source. The FPPC will investigate any violations of that that may, that may occur. And, you know, they're, that's sort of what they're built to do. And, and we will, anybody that violates it will be sub, subject to the penalty provisions of the, of the Political Reform Act, as, as is the case with many other violations of elections and, uh, uh, city council rules. The, the second option we have is, and, and that's the lowest cost option for the city because it allows the, the agency that commonly enforces those kinds of things to take the lead on that. And so from a practical perspective, it's probably the easiest solution at this time. The second option is if you, if the council wishes to apply a separate limit, whatever that may be, $3,000, $500, $1,000, whatever it is, we will prepare a, based on that direction, a staff report and an ordinance for council to consider, which would lower the amount of, of funds that an individual candidate could take from any individual source. I'm going to leave it up to council to debate the finer points of, of campaign finance and whether or not it's a good idea to have higher or lower limits. There are plenty of compelling arguments both ways. But I will tell you from a practical, uh, uh, staff work perspective, our thought is that if we are to create our own limit locally, basically that shifts all of the responsibilities for enforcement and monitoring of that to us here at City Hall and more directly to our elections official and city clerk most likely. And frankly, as council is well aware, we are not built for that. And, and the city clerk, you ask her to give her opinion on whether or not that's an appropriate role locally. My personal opinion is that the FPPC exists for a reason and they are very good at, at monitoring and enforcing those guidelines. And so therefore, you know, my recommendation to the city manager would be that easiest solution with the most minimal budgetary impact to the city would be to do nothing at this time and revert to the general provisions of AB 571. Now, Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, is that this doesn't mean that in some, at some point in the indeterminate future, council couldn't decide that we don't like the $4,700 maximum. We think it should be lower and, and you could adopt a, at some later point, a, a policy for that if you felt like it was necessary. Am I correct about that, Tom?
Yes, that's correct. I would also add too that neither one of these applies to self-funding, which is a question that's come up before.
Right. This is only for, for.
Contribution from other. Yes.
Right. So that's the totality of the report. The, the reason we're putting it on for this item is quite frankly that we have a, the deadline coming up. Practically, we don't really have a primary election coming up in the, you know, spring or anything like that, that, you know, we're aware of at this time at least. And so there's not an immediate need to, to, to set limits if, if you wanted to. But we wanted to give council the opportunity to hash it out and, and give us some direction.
Councilmember Campbell, I think that $4,700 is a reasonable fee to stop it at. Now that we're in districts, we don't need quite as much money or materials to campaign as we did in the past. Yet at the same time, if somebody's running for mayor, they'll be going citywide and they need that much money to be able to really cover the city possibly. So I also like the idea that if we go with what the, uh, the item B is, that we really don't have to police it. It's no use of our personnel. We can have them do other things. And if you can make the $4,700 and need to do that, then go for it. But if you can do a campaign with this less than that, because my last campaign, I only spent $700. So it can be up to each individual, but that would be the limit to keep it reasonable.
Any other comments?
Councilmember Darlene Barbara Martinez. I, I, I like option number two. I don't think we should be doing anything at all. We're not in the business of trying to change what's already been set. I think we should just follow state law.
Councilmember Fosse, I agree with Darlene. I think let them regulate it.
Vice Mayor Rebaire, yeah, I'm, I'm also in agreement. I don't, I don't see it as an issue. I, I also agree. I think the $4,700 is pretty massive for a district. But seeing as it could create some staffing issues, I'm, I'm kind of curious of some of the other cities with the same population that, that do have these limits. I wonder if that's kind of affecting something else within the department. I understand that limits do encourage the outreach, but I, I don't see that as an issue here in the city of Riverbank. So I do like that the agencies are already set up for this and this, this we can revisit in a year or two down the road. So I, I am also in favor of option two.
Before I bring it out to the public, I'm, I'm also in favor of option two. only because we don't want to buy additional staff to, to take this unfunded mandate from the state. I do believe that the state should, uh, regulate the state and let the cities regulate themselves. I perceive this as an incursion into the cities. And if the cities fa, uh, feel that there should be some type of regulation, the city should initiate it, regulate it, and control it, not the state dictate because they don't want contributions or they're trying to limit contributions. What that does is that in, in areas such as larger cities, or it, does it affect charter cities, Tom? I don't think it does.
No.
So they're not affected by it. So what they're doing is they're affecting general law cities. And in this, they, they can, uh, again, uh, eventually start collecting more funding, uh, for the FPPC. But I'm only for it because I don't want to pay for the extra staffing. I do, again, uh, feel that the state is overstepping again. Uh, and they don't have a firm reason other than, uh, somebody, uh, wanted to change it. Annabelle, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
I'll bring it back to the council for consideration.
Mayor, just to confirm, uh, that, that the option you all indicated is, is not two, it's option one, which is do nothing.
Yeah, do nothing. Sorry. That's okay. Whoever makes the option, the call.
I think, uh, this is, uh, Councilmember Fosse. I make a, a motion that we adopt, uh, a do nothing, um, with this proposal.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez, a second.
We have a motion to approve item six point one, option one for AB five seventy-one. That is to do nothing, but just let, uh, the fall in line for the state. And we have a second by Councilmember Barbara Martinez. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Uribe here. I'm showing on my, uh, script here, option one is the, is the, is, uh, the preparing ordinance here. So I just want to make sure we're, we're picking the right one.
Councilmember.
Item six point one.
Vice Mayor, there's a bit of a discrepancy. Under the recommendation, the do nothing is option two. You're correct. Um, but under the alternatives, it is option one.
Thank you.
So perhaps we should state it as do nothing and accept the contribution limits established by AB five seventy-one.
Thank you. I did that.
I made my motion to do nothing under AB five seven one.
Right. And I mentioned that for both, uh, Councilmember Fosse and Councilmember Barbara Martinez, it was the do nothing option.
Okay. Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item six point two, a resolution authorizing amendment of the public benefit fund expenditure policy. Maricela.
I'm gonna share my screen really quick and go through a really quick PowerPoint for you. So good evening, mayor and council members. Um, tonight is an item that was already discussed at the October thirteenth city council meeting. So this is nearly formalizing, uh, the direction given by the city council at that time. Um, so just quickly for members of the public, that public benefit fund that we are discussing was created in 2018 and accounts for all cannabis-related revenues, and that includes public benefit fees and any non-performance penalties, interest, or fines. Now, the current expenditure policy, um, has these four items, um, as authorized expenses. Public safety, which will include additional deputies or enhancements to our law enforcement contract, uh, code enforcement for additional code enforcement officers, special projects that can provide grant opportunities to residents for recreation programs, and offsets to our city departments that are responsible for administration of the funds. Uh, just really quickly, I wanted to show you what our public benefit expense allocation looks like. So currently, seventy-one percent of the budget, um, goes towards law enforcement. Um, twenty percent goes to the camera lease, and then currently we had set aside about nine percent of the budget and for our new downtown camera project. And so, uh, the amendments that were, um, discussed at the prior council meeting include the following. Funding for one-time strategic capital expenses in support of public safety and public services, including recreation. And so some of these might include, um, expenses related to acquisition of property to address homelessness in our city, um, or to provide enhanced service options to, um, our, uh, recreation in our residence. Um, the second is more of a direction in terms of what projects need to be brought to the city council. So any new expenses that exceed $25,000, which is currently the city manager's, um, approval authority, um, are only authorized when the city council, um, has that item in front of them for consideration. And so that will be brought to you on a project-by-project basis if it's outside of our normal budgeting process. And so with that, do you have any questions? I'm available for questions as well.
I have a question.
Any questions for Maricela before we go to public comment?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, I was noticing some things on Facebook and a few, a few people made comments about, does this mean, can they apply for grants with this? And I think we better correct, uh, correct, correct it to let them know that this is something that the council is doing or am I mistaken, you know, with saying that?
Uh, no, you're correct. Uh, uh, the grants that we're discussing as part of the original um, are related to being able to offer grants to our lower-income residents who might not have the ability to participate in our recreation programs, uh, due to lack of funds. Uh, we currently have a program such as that. Uh, some of the funding is received from fundraisers. Um, some of it is through donations, and so that's strictly set aside by the recreation department in order to provide those grants to residents so that they could be able to have their children participate in some of the programs that we offer. So it's not necessarily grants for nonprofits or for outside agencies. It's for our recreation program and residents receive the grant so that they can participate in the programs.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that because I saw some things that related that some people got the idea that they could maybe apply for a grant, per se, but this is something that's still done within the council, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Uh, any public comment?
There are no public comments.
Okay, I bring it back to the council to consider the two, uh, um, amendments, uh, to the, um, uh, to the public benefit fund. That is, um, one-time strategic planning and $25,000 or more for new expenditures that will have the, uh, council approval. Do we have any recommendations?
Vice Mayor Uribe here. I'll make a motion to approve item six point two, the funding for the one-time strategic expenditures and the twenty, the exceeding the $25,000 limit, authorizing, uh, new, new project-by-project basis.
Councilmember Campbell, I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve, um, item six point two, uh, with the two amendments to the expenditure policy by the vice mayor and a second by Councilmember Campbell. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Uribe.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, thank you all for the staff. And now staff, do you have any, uh, any comments, reports?
Uh, yes, uh, three very brief items. Um, first off, uh, as council probably has already seen, uh, unfortunately, Stanislaus County has been placed back into the purple tier, which is the worst here, um, widespread infections essentially is what it means. So there will be a number of, uh, modifications that are going to be required for our local businesses. Um, it essentially puts us right back into the position we were in for a number of months here towards the end of the summer, um, when, when things were most difficult. So, um, not great news, uh, but, um, you know, I think we thought that there would probably, the likelihood of this happening was fairly high just given that the flu season was coming and, and, um, we're now many, many months into this pandemic. And I think that there's some, uh, folks that believe that some of the, um, you know, ongoing, uh, um, tenacity for maintaining social distance and being safe has, has worn down a little generally. And so, uh, the county is just reminding folks that we need to remember that this is no different than a few months ago. We need to be as vigilant as possible. We'll be reaching out to our businesses and, and, um, we've still have our mask program and we still have our enforcement, uh, mechanisms going on. And so if you see something that you think needs to be looked into, please contact us. Um, secondly, um, Gorma and Maricela have done a really good job on, uh, putting together in very short order a nonprofit, um, grant program. We're called the Nonprofit Support Program, which council had authorized $100,000 towards, um, which will provide grants to, um, uh, everything from, uh, possible utility assistance, rental and mortgage assistance, and provide food to residents in need that have been affected by the, the pandemic. The grant program kicked off today, so please contact our office if you're a nonprofit. Uh, we've already reached out to a number of our locals that, that are nonprofits that will be, uh, uh, applying. And finally, um, when, uh, we have a large project that we complete, um, I like to try to highlight the staff person responsible for it. This may not be a technical project that's like is a physical one, but I do think we should just, uh, recognize Annabelle, our city clerk, for helping foster through another election cycle. Um, and she takes her responsibility along those lines very seriously. And, um, we had, at least the reports I got back from her and a lot of the community was that we had little to no problems, uh, that I'm aware of at our polling locations. And it sounds like at least here in Riverbank, it went very smoothly. And so huge thanks to her.
Thank you.
And that's it, Sean?
That's it.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Campbell?
Uh, I just would like to say tomorrow's Veterans Day, and if you can honor a veteran in some way, uh, please do so. Also, there is a Toys for Tots program being put on at Casa, at Casa de Rio. Uh, that's over by, uh, the, on the Rio Altura grounds, the language academy. And you can bring your toys there and drop them off at 2,400 Stanislaus Avenue during the school day, and they will pick them up and distribute them from there to the needy children. Also, um, I think there's some troubled times coming along with the current, uh, election and with the coronavirus increasing nationwide and worldwide. And we need to walk, watch, walk carefully, watch our funding because, uh, we may have a lot of other businesses all of a sudden that are going to be knocked down since we're in the purple, uh, section again. And they, they may need our help to survive. So everybody have a good, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilmember Fosse.
Thank you. I don't have any other topics. Thank you.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Okay, uh, Valley Improvement Projects is a local organization that does a lot of environmental, uh, justice and social justice. Uh, they work on a lot of those kinds of informational, uh, sessions and they're having their annual forum. On, uh, tomorrow, the eleventh, uh, at four o'clock will be the Environmental with Climate Justice for the Youth Academy. And on the twelfth, um, at five will be the Law Enforcement Account and Oversight. And then on the thirteenth, um, at five will be tenants' rights, rent increases, and, uh, evictions during COVID-19. So they do give you a lot of information. They have panel speakers. And, um, they also have had drinking water in Stanislaus County and San Joaquin County and community air monitoring. So they're a good organization and giving out a lot of, uh, valuable information to the community. And let's see. Okay, so for the toy drive, we're having on, uh, Saturday, November of the 21st. At Kohl's, it will be a, just bring a toy, drop it off in front of Kohl's. And then our toy giveaway will be with the Marines on Saturday, December 19th. Uh, and that will be from twelve to four at Cardosa. Um, and I want to say to all veterans, we thank you for your service and happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I also wanted to thank Annabelle. Uh, she did a lot of, a lot of work for the election. I want to thank, uh, anybody that had a part in it, uh, from the poll workers, police officers, election officials, uh, merit, mail carriers, and especially, uh, our voters. Uh, you know, this, this election was a little, a little intense, so, but this is how we ensure our democracy, you know, stay on track and count every vote. Uh, so I just wanted to thank everybody there. Uh, Thanksgiving's around the corner. Please be, be safe. Testing sites for COVID are still available and free. Uh, think about your family and friends, uh, during the holidays, uh, since we won't be coming back till December. Uh, Small Business Saturday is November 28th. So I'd, I'd like to encourage everybody, shop local, support your local businesses, especially with what's going on. Um, and then just a quick update on the county's outreach team. They'll be back this Friday. Uh, due to the holidays, they had to adjust the next two visits. So November 13th and December 11th will be the, the next two visits for that. Um, I'll be attending two virtual roundtables, um, held by the league. One will be on homelessness and what the cities are doing this winter, and the second will be a, uh, full legislative briefing covering all the bills signed into law. So that's how I'm ending my year, sounds like so. Uh, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you very much. Just very briefly, uh, we've had a request to have our, uh, documents and our council meetings minutes transcribed. I believe that's a good endeavor that we should take on. And as we're providing any public forums, that we should have, uh, immediate translation as well as sign language. Uh, we should start looking at that as being part of the safety and public funding. Uh, I believe that those would be well-invested investments for the community that would help with environmental and also social justice. Speaking of those, uh, environmental and so, social justice, as we do our new, um, general plan, I keep bringing that up, I believe, and I, one day I'll be listening to. But our new general plan, we'll have that available as part of our new sections. So, uh, in the next three years, that'll be a major portion of, um, our work. Just to let you know that, uh, in the, uh, air quality, one of the, uh, goals are, our ability for offset equivalencies that, uh, San Joaquin Valley did not meet their goal for the first time since that has been started. And staff at the Air Board told the membership ten days before the report is due. So we should be hearing more on that, uh, environmental, uh, impact, uh, in the next couple of weeks. And the last thing, I do like the, uh, re-initiation of the bi-weekly reports. I believe if we expand it, maybe just have it monthly, but as you state a, an issue or you state you, you attended or you did this project, how about having an evaluation, a small evaluation of, or a conclusion, this is what the impacts are? For example, um, Kathleen Kleek went to the active transportation. Um, and I'm not picking her out. Uh, there's just one that, no, I read it, so it's there. So what were the outcomes of that, um, uh, board, not that board, it was a, um, uh, a meeting for all of Stan Cog, active transportation. What were the outcomes? How does it affect Riverbank? Those are items that we could look at. And then as we read the bi-weekly, possibly now a monthly, And then as we read the biweekly, possibly now a monthly, we'll get more information than, oh, yes, staff changed the oil out in in the evac truck. How are we doing on the evac truck or something else? Just give us a complete report instead of a bulletized no substance report. Not that it's no substance. That was Ronald Brian. One that could be more complete. With that, I do want to wish those veterans, happy Veterans Day. And Sean, are we doing the acknowledgement of veterans on our electronic board?
Yeah, I'll 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 give you a call on the detail of that, but you'll notice we have we have acknowledgements, thank you messages on both both sides.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're going to go to closed session. The public will have three minutes to comment on closed session items prior to the City Council LRA Board recession to closed session. Closed session item 8.1, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision Delta of section 54956.9, number of cases, one potential case. Annabelle, are there any public comments for closed session?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. The public portion of this meeting has concluded. The City Council and the LRA Board will be going into closed session. The report on closed session item will be reflected in the minutes of this meeting. Anyone interested in receiving what was reported on the item may contact the city clerk by calling 209-863-7198 or email cityclerk@riverbank.org. The next regular meeting on November 24th is canceled. The next open meeting will be on Tuesday, December 8th at 6:00 p.m. We will be installing a new newly elected member of the council. Please join us. We now adjourn to closed session.